I'll tell you that.
No problem. Let's call a meeting in order. We'll call Jay.
Okay, Mike Ridley.
Here.
Jay Reed's my here. Bobby Boazovic.
Here.
Janet Vance.
Here.
Robert Kramer.
Here.
All present.
Okay, approval of agenda?
That we approved the agenda as mentioned.
Okay, is there support? All support? Any discussion?
Just a second. Do we have minutes?
I already had Bobby look at the minutes, we're good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So, was that?
Yep, I have Janet's motion.
You seconded it.
I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment on agenda items? Yes, go ahead. How about getting to the table there?
At the May 8 meeting, Sue had asked about the fireworks donations. They hadn't been deposited in the account yet. I understand they've still not been received into BSNA. They're still not deposited. There's over $4,000. I think Bob, your Facebook page, you updated it four days ago. So, it's supposed to be in the treasurer's office and it's supposed to be received in. I don't, we don't know if people have gotten receipts. We don't know anything because we don't know where the money is. So, I'm asking about that. I'm very concerned about that.
I'll take care of that today.
Where is it?
I have it in the office. I'll take care of that. People have been handing me checks as I walk down the street and so I brought them in when I can and I'll get them to you today.
Thank you. Public comment, agenda items? Okay, public comment closed? Make appointments. Who was taking that one?
I have that one. Let me just make a note here first before I forget to. Okay, as you know, we, our administrative assistant left us. We have, we have now been out posting for another new administrative assistant. Janet Vance and I, the hiring committee, interviewed two candidates from approximately nine resumes. Chris Green has the best accounting, financial qualifications, experience, skills compared to all other candidates' resumes. Chris will be able to manage payroll, taxes, general ledgers, audit preparation such as year-end workman's comp, scheduling minutes, budget adjustments. We also have the new uniform, Charter of Accounts implementation coming which will put additional burdens on communication there and general continuous improvement in our procedures, filing and such. So Janet and I have decided that this is the best candidate. We said we needed to come back here to the board to get final confirmation or agreement on the wages that this candidate would be compensated. The range for the administrative assistant posting was from $19 to $24 depending upon the person's qualifications and experience. She will be offered 30 hours per week up to occasionally 40 hours per week during peak periods at $23 per hour. Cost of Laura, for instance, was $20 per hour at 35 hours a week, roughly $700. And we also ask Laura to work weekends at peak times as well. And the total cost of Chris would be $23 per hour which would be approximately $690. So the costs are in line with each other. So I'm looking for confirmation or agreement that we can go ahead with this pursuit, Chris Green as the administrative assistant.
She lives in St. Ignace, does she?
Yes.
You guys concerned about travel in the winter?
I am.
We can make arrangements for that.
I think we need to. She could do VPN, right Bobby?
Thank you.
Like you do? In extreme, is that hard to set up?
No. But she would have to have her own laptop, I think. We don't want to have, to have all these financial investments to have everyone have a computer in the office to log into and laptops all over.
Right.
So she should have her own?
That would be my thought process.
That's what she do.
I use my own, my personal laptop to log in. I don't have two treasurer computers.
She acknowledges that it can sometimes be challenging and that we'd have to work with her.
It's extremely dangerous in the winter, that strip. So I share your concern.
One thing she did say is when you live in St. Ignace, you plan on traveling anywhere from a half an hour to an hour to get to your job anyway. So she doesn't feel that 35 miles away is all that excessive, so.
So again, I'll make the motion that we hire Chris at $23 an hour, 30 hours minimum. Go ahead, second.
Is there support?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, Schedule Budget Workshop and Planning Commission, CIP presentation. Who has that?
I'm sorry, which one is that?
Number six, Schedule the Budget Workshops and Planning Commission, the Capital Improvement Program Presentation, number six.
I didn't put that one in here.
Bob, was that yours?
Is that yours?
Yeah.
I think you guys picked on.
I'm going to make an appointment.
No?
Okay. I think maybe, I would like to have it at night. So more people can attend. So the planning commission can come in and explain their.
Your microphone went out.
And need batteries.
Yeah, you can take mine.
So it would be nice to be able to schedule something at night so more people could attend, maybe. I was thinking either Tuesday, the 23rd, but probably Thursday, the 25th would be better at 6:00. If that accommodates everyone.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Did anyone check the calendar?
Yes.
Norm calendar?
Yes, it's good. Both days are good, but Thursday would give.
At what time?
Because Mike's last day is on the 20th.
Correct.
So then you have a Monday. A Tuesday might be too early and we got to give notice to, you know, police, parks. I talked with Chief Temple, Thursday's better for him than Tuesday. So I'm suggesting the 25th at 6:00.
Okay. There's a motion for 5:25, it's at 6:00 PM?
I'll second that.
Let's call in favor? I guess I can vote, you can vote.
It's on a Tuesday, it's a Thursday.
The Thursday.
Thursday, the 25th.
At 6:00 PM.
And is that good with the planning commission? It's not good?
Not me.
Not you, not you?
I had.
Okay.
It's right before the holiday.
As long as Mike's there.
Okay.
Is that good for the planning commission?
No, it isn't. They're.
We have a wedding and she's.
Jane? Are you available, Jane?
Yes.
Okay, I think we are at that.
Okay.
So the motion carries for?
25th of May at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
Okay, hiring pay settings, number eight, or number seven, I'm sorry.
I just covered that. I thought the appointments were by mistake there, so we can back up to appointments if we need to here.
What is appointments?
The hiring and pay setting I think was supposed to be the administration, appointments was probably going to appoint someone to be the supervisor when you leave and I think we got them confused.
Okay. So you want to back that up to make appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So who do we have for supervisor?
Well, let me say this, we've only had, well, I'll make the motion that we make about Kramer, the new supervisor. Someone could second that.
There's someone to second?
I'll second.
Now discussion.
Wait a minute, I can carry this one.
I'm not gone yet, Jay.
I'm just trying to.
I can't vote.
But he can talk.
I'm just trying to help.
I know.
Mike say discussion.
You're just going to say I was the last man standing, is that what you're going to say?
Last sucker standing.
Okay, any, we have a motion and we have support and is there any more discussion?
I would just like to say yes, there is some discussion that we only received one applicant, one resume for that position, that was Bob Kramer.
The only problem with that is that Bob is overqualified for the job. I read that resume.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
How did you read the resume? He sent his resume to me just to let me see it, so I thought, oh, really?
I thought we sent it to everybody.
No.
We sent it to the board.
You sent, you sent the names, I didn't get any attachments.
Did you get any attachment?
I saw Bob's name. I have a question, Bob. My concern for you would be that when you and I talked about this, you said timing with your daughter in Kansas was going to be an issue for you even to continue as a trustee.
And I'm here, I'm here.
I know you're here, but.
I fly in and out.
You're not concerned that you're going to put yourself?
I'll have it, I will find a deputy supervisor to help me and I will appoint them as, what's the MTA call it, deputy plus?
Deputy supervisor.
Deputy supervisor system plus. So in case I do have to run off, I'll be back in a week. I don't plan on leaving again until after the annual meeting and then it would only be for a few days. But to answer your question, the only reason I'm stepping up, and Mike, you know I don't, I really didn't want to do this for the very reasons that Bobby's talking, but as you all know, I have thousands of hours invested in the sewer system as you do and as you did for many years. I've got to see that through. I absolutely have to see that through. I think I owe it to the community and I'm going to need your help, you know that. I'm going to need your help, you know that. And that's my primary reason for stepping up. I waited till the last minute when our other gentleman pulled the application.
Okay, any more, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm torn, but I'm going to say no.
And I can't vote, so it's two to one.
I'm staying.
Congratulations.
Do we know the process?
I don't know the process.
Are we following the right process here to do that?
I don't know.
Because you hold another position?
Yes, we can.
I'll have to resign. Which I will submit after the meeting.
Okay.
If that pleasures the board, then we wouldn't want to advertise it right away.
Okay, are there any more appointments? Okay, just a supervisor then. We're back to number eight, pay bills?
Yes, okay, I have this one. We have a number of vendors or small businessmen that like to get paid, so that was part of the reason to bring this forward rather than to do it at the end of the, or at every regular board meeting. And so, take a look at this, this is, we have invoices loaded to get these paid, they just need board approval. See if there's something there that you'd like to discuss further.
The only thing, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that the Views Tree Service for $6,500, some of that is for the light elimination and will be refunded on some of that, I forget the exact amount, I think it's like.
$1,500.
$1,500, yeah, that's what I was thinking. So that will, that will be reimbursed to us when we submit that to the state land bank.
Okay, SS, who is that?
It's our cleaning sanitary supplies.
Oh, okay. And Elan Financial Services.
I'm not sure who that is.
I think that's the credit card now, right?
Oh, that's our credit card.
Oh, the one that won't give us any money? Over $10,000.
Yeah, it's our community credit card, C and B Community Credit Card. They use Elan Financial Services for their financial transactions. Let me say that there is a couple of tree clearing things in here, obviously Views, and then on the second page, there's Zach Skier up for the airport for $8,000 to address the issue we have with the runway.
Right.
And the tree clearance.
This US.
Whoa, 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 explain it to me again.
Yeah. MDOT has said we had to clear off all those trees out there, so Andy got on it with, we actually.
Is this the one not on our property?
Right, well, we've been doing it for years.
I know.
We paid Zach's uncle and his dad to clear trees for, you know, since the airport's been there.
Why don't we just buy them?
You know? That's why we had to do it because, I was complaining earlier.
Because of the FAA?
Well, yeah, it's MDOT Aeronautics. What happens is because it's starting to overgrow, they would take our threshold, and he showed, you've been on the runway, you can see where the threshold is where people can land, and if those trees were moved, they have to move it way up and it reduces.
Is this on the hill?
That's on the hill.
Oh, which makes it worse, the hill makes it worse.
Yeah, oh yeah.
In other words, the easiest way to explain is if you don't cut the trees down, you have to shorten runway.
Correct, good way to put it. So, and it was, it was a safety thing too, I mean, that was.
Well, we might be able to get some of that money back if we could ask Andy to get with our forester and perhaps sell some of that.
That's exactly.
Some of the trees that we have on the north side of the runway.
Yeah, it's all Zach's wood, it's all his trees. Zach's.
No, no, I'm talking about on our property.
Okay.
We could recover some of that someday.
So I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, is there support?
I'll support.
Any more discussion? I would like to keep an eye on this, USIC locating services, how often do they bill?
All monthly.
That's a lot that.
Well, they, again, I ask them for the complete rundown of all the locations that they're doing the, you know, the inspections.
Yep.
That's all we get is we get, maybe there's 20, 20 locations.
Is this Miss Dig?
Miss Dig?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I call, the township's paying?
Not necessarily, it's only for our sewer and any of our, any of our, it's not for everyone, it's just the sewer. If they're digging anywhere near the sewer, we get charged for Miss Dig.
Now, are we, are we sending, are we pulling that money from the sewer fund? Instead of the general fund?
I don't know if that's.
Should we be doing that?
To look at how.
I believe we're, I believe we're going with the sewer, I believe that's where we're, because it's the only, that makes the only sense in terms of who's requesting.
That's an extremely high bill too, it's not.
Really, that's really high.
I agree, but like I said, there's like, there was like, usually it's two or three, there was like 10 to 15 different, yeah.
Is that because of what Aaron's doing?
If they're digging, yeah, but.
If he's, if he's putting mistakes.
I'm trying to think what's going on in the sewer system that's, I've seen people all around. I know that, oh, I know that MDOT is doing the new signage project that got their, have you seen green stakes and things along the road, green paint? That's all the new signings are laying out, so I'm sure they're doing Miss Dig for that. And that is all the way on M68, so that's, that's a, that's a good portion. But it just seems to me, I'll look at, I'll get those records and I will look at that.
Yeah, I mean.
You got them too, yeah.
But again, I, I agree with everything that people are saying here and I'm looking for more information myself and people that submit these bills and I believe it's the sewer, Tammy, that's submitting these bills, so that's where, that's where it would come from, is the sewer fund. But we need better and more clarity in terms, I'll say, better ownership in terms of who is asking for these bills and why. And on this one, it's kind of ambivalent. If, one thing we can do is say we don't approve it and then we'll come back at the next meeting and approve it. It's up to you, up to the board.
To the board, up to you guys, if you want to fight that one.
So again, I'll make the motion to approve these bills and make adjustments to these bills.
Hank, so let me ask this, we know they're legitimate bills, correct?
Yes.
We just don't know whether they're for the sewer fund or something else. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think we pay for any other.
You just have to, I don't want to say yes without looking in the computer, but I believe that's how Jay codes them, is a 590, so.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so it's just a question of charging back?
Why, yeah, why is there this big jone? There's, yeah, I think that's the only question Mike's saying is why is there such a large, why is this bill so big?
It's $2,244 for Miss Dig.
So that would be a Tammy question?
Usually it's in the $200 to $300 range.
That would be a Tammy question?
Well, I've got the old cars, that is what, that comes in, old cars, and it'll tell you where, where it is.
I have that too.
Yeah, we can look at it, okay.
I don't believe we have the ability to dispute though.
Yeah, I know, it's there, it's there.
Right, so I think.
It is what it is.
Yeah, but just keeping an eye on it makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Jay has a motion to pay the bills?
Bob's seconding.
Bob's seconding, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approved minutes.
Jay, I brought, excuse me, I brought some minutes in from April that were reviewed at our 5:2 that needed to, needed to change. I just wanted to make sure people knew that the minutes had been updated and we're going to post online. I reviewed them with Bobby, Bobby made the request, so she said they were okay, so we'll go ahead and repost them.
Okay. Number 10, L4029s.
What are they?
Well, you know, I sent all this out by email about a week ago.
Yes.
And what they are for everybody is edification is the county equalization department each year requires us to submit, they make a tentative proposal, I guess, to submit basically what our tax rates are going to be for the coming year in taxation. And it says that if your unit levies winter millage only, the statutory date of submission is September 20th, we have a summer and a winter millage, which means it needs to be done as soon as possible. So that's why it's here. Past years, it got done in, I think July and August, but really what it means is we need to agree on what the military rates will be here going forward for 2023 taxes that would go out in the summer as well as this winter.
Jay, what's, what summer millage, or what do you want to charge on the summer bill?
I, we're going to charge these rates, I don't know how they're divided up between summer and winter.
Yeah, we don't charge anything in the summer.
Okay.
There's no summer millage for Tuscarawas Township.
So we don't have any, all the summer is, is what school bills are?
For Tuscarawas Township, yes, it's the county allocated and one of the school millages, so we don't submit a form. These forms are only submitted as our request, the county has nothing to do with it. She gives you numbers that you need to calculate these.
Right.
And then anyone can calculate it. In most townships, you'll see they're, they are calculated by the clerk.
Right.
And then signed by the clerk and the supervisor.
The clerk is responsible, bring it before the board to get the board's approval on what they want to do, so if.
But you, but it's here, it's calculations, so you, you can't calculate these until you have a budget.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
You can do this, yeah.
So, so we can just postpone this until we do our budget workshop and stuff.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why does this say, like police, we know the limit is five mils, why does it say unlimited? Is that a trick question?
No, it's, it's, there's no, there's no, there's no time limit on it.
Right, so you can charge it every year. Some millages are a five-year millage.
Oh, okay, this is time-wise, not cost-wise?
Yep.
Okay.
So you'll see some of those.
All right, thank you.
And then the other thing, Jay, I would recommend, since we're talking about it, you don't want to, you want to bring this in calculated for board approval. You don't want to try and calculate it in a board meeting.
That's fine, but I wanted to bring it up before we left and make sure we had the right information.
Yep.
So thank you for your.
So I make a motion that we postpone it and discuss it during our budget workshop.
Is there support?
I'll second.
Jay supports, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, we're just clicking right on today.
Okay, board pre-approved expense, summer music.
I move that we approve this expense.
Okay, yeah, it's because this has been approved by the board, I mean, the DDA already.
Yes, I know.
And we've.
Well, let's just explain what we're trying to do.
Okay, this is $5,000 for musicians, boy, what a gig, will be paid out in 10 separate checks of $500 each to our music series. This comes from the DDA. The financial impact of this is already worked into the DDA's 23, 24 budget and is supplemented by a spelling by approximately $2,500 in community donations. Recommendation approved the disbursement of 10 $500 checks for the music series and that was prepared by me and I'm not, as a matter of transparency, I didn't book myself, so. I didn't want anybody to show up.
But you can now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do we have a motion?
I did.
Yeah, Bob made a motion, there's support?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I didn't.
Okay, and then fireworks, what was that all about?
I have a check coming in today for, that you should get today from the Matig and Grundy families for $600 and for Hall Marine for $1,000, so that'll put us over. And I would like to see us do the same thing that the DDA's doing for fireworks, have a little music prior to the fireworks and even during the fireworks. And I went out at Janet's request and got with Matt at the brewery and the owner of, gosh, The Breakers and got four or five bids and found a gentleman that would do it for $500 and he also does the Boyne City fireworks, so he has experience. So if that's something you'd like to do, it's 500 bucks, the average was about a thousand.
You've got to work on your donations.
Yeah, yes.
I guess I have a question about the donations because I have been being questioned about where the money is being held. And if it's being, if the township is undertaking this, it, the money that comes in is supposed to be deposited immediately. So Bob looking at Jay and saying, I'll have a check for you today, the checks should come into the, either Karen can receipt them in and they should be deposited immediately.
Sure, absolutely.
And I'll take care of that for you today. Any cash should have been given receipts because it's one thing when you just go out and collect donations, but when we're doing it under the township's name, it's a little more of a legal matter.
That's why I won't take them, that's why I won't take the money, I tell them to come in here.
Right, well, but we haven't gotten any in here.
Right, well, there was some, you were gone and there was some larger checks, so I put them in Jay's office to make sure they're locked up so I can give them to you. So I kept them, you know, under.
You and I had the discussion about the money, so Jay's office isn't where they should be.
I know, but you weren't here when I got the checks and some of them, like I said, were being handed to me personally and so I brought them right in, you weren't here, so I said, Jay, can you put them in your desk and lock it up for me until I get them to you? So I will take care of that.
Shouldn't we put them under your door?
Yeah, yeah, the money should not, I mean.
Yeah, we just put them under her door.
To the treasurer.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
Yeah, so, and I know there were some taken when I was here because I listened to the conversation, so, they were being hidden in a drawer.
Well, not at that time. I was told, I was told by Karen how she wanted it done and I was doing it the way she did, but I felt uncomfortable, so I changed it.
Because you're not bonded and you shouldn't.
I am bonded, but I'm an employee here as well, I'm on the bonding.
So on the bonding, we have a $100,000 fixed level that covers all employees including officials.
All officials?
And, and the treasurer is, I think, bonded at an additional $15,000 and the clerk at $10,000 and the supervisor at $5,000 plus.
I was always under the impression the three of us were the bond.
So I did check on that, it was a good question, but we are covered.
Okay, good, but we should make sure we get the money always.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Um, and then I guess the other part of that is, in the past, we have also, we've always collected donations for fireworks. It's never not a thing. Um, and we've used that to offset the cost to the taxpayer. So when we have, you know, when we've set the contract up, we set it up thinking, okay, last year we got five thousand, last year we got three thousand, and kind of look at that with the budget, so that we're not spending more of the taxpayer dollars. So are we planning on sticking at that fifteen thousand with the township, and then any extras going towards more? Are we going to try and offset some portion of the cost to the taxpayer?
A little of both, a little of both.
Because we got to pay the firemen. And the donations will help with that.
So we had fifteen thousand budgeted for fireworks.
This is what-
Oh, because it's on the ground issue?
Yes, there's a lot more work to be involved, and I said, Dave, you know, we'll take care of your guys, you know, because we have to have them. And he will let me know after the fact, um, you know, once he figures out how many guys he gets and stuff, and I got to meet with him probably in the next week or so and, and narrow that down. But I says, of course, you know, we'll take care of your guys, because it's a holiday, and they're with their families and stuff, so.
Okay, so that's a new, that should be a contract, you can't just pass out-
Yeah, well, that's what some of the donation money I thought would, would help with that.
But if it's still running through the township, you have to make sure-
Exactly, yeah.
Because there's liability.
That's why I got to get with him this week and get that narrowed down, yeah.
So, yeah, we just have to be careful, because I, I feel like this is running into a murky area as far as the township finances are concerned. We have to make sure if it's, you know, we can absolutely take donations as the township, but we have to make sure we're doing it in the manner which the law, right, prescribes for it.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then just kind of be caught, you know, be aware that we did use that money to offset in the past, and, you know, fireworks are an amazing thing, they're one of my favorites, so making a bigger and better show is, is always a good thing, but I think we want to be careful that we're not taking away from other, you know, duties of ours.
Right, because there was expenses, last time, you know, we had to rent the barge and all that kind of stuff, and there was some expenses that went to, that started that. So, you know, there's always expenses related to something like this, so.
But, yeah, so we should just make sure.
Police overtime.
Right, yeah, they pay that. So, yeah, just, I just wanted to throw that out there to make sure.
Are we, do we reimburse, do we reimburse the police?
I thought we took, I don't know if it, if it was a separate item for anything that entered into his budget, or we reimburse them, I'm not entirely-
I'll talk to Chief Temple and find out what's going on with that.
But I know that there was, there was police overtime.
I was going to say, I think he might-
I think what I've-
There's overtime with the parade, there's overtime with a lot of that.
Yeah, and I think he works that in, but I'm not positive.
I think, I think what I've learned through this discussion is that when we do the budget next year, we got to build in more of those costs, not just the fifteen thousand dollar fire contract, but everything, whether it's a barge or a sheriff, so, you know, it could be twenty-two, it could be seventeen.
Yeah, or plan the fundraising aspect in with that, because that's what we've always done in the past, is, you know, kind of looked at where the donations are at currently.
The, the response has been overwhelming, I think when it's all said and done, we're going to raise over seventy-five hundred bucks, I really do.
Great. So I don't even know if you need any kind of motion, if you're going to take, and you want to, this is all fireworks show, you, you're going to hire a DJ or somebody to do the-
I don't like doing that.
Only the motion here is to pre-authorize the expense, so that we don't have to come back to the board and, and not pay the musicians or the people doing the fireworks on time.
You still have to approve the bills.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But this would be a pre-authorization, and we can actually spend this money without coming back to-
In your budget.
Within the budget, without coming back to, again, we can, I'd make the motion that we pre-authorize the expense for fireworks of five hundred dollars based on donations, and that's it, that's all we're, we're asking for here. So anybody second-
So Bobby, what, what we're trying to do is, when that gentleman comes and does the show, when it's over, we hand him a five hundred dollar check, and the man don't have to wait thirty days. Just, that's the same thing you do for the DDA.
That's the point I was going to make, but again, the motion's there, is anyone want to second?
Any support?
I'll support.
Jay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comments?
Jeff Milner, I'd just like a clarification on the vote to make Bob Kramer the supervisor. Had a yes from Mr. Ritzma, a yes from Mrs. Vance, a no from Bobby, Mike didn't vote, and Mr. Kramer, you're a conflict of interest, so it shouldn't pass.
We'll look in on it, but we agreed we're going to have to call, we'll make sure, you asked me earlier what the process, did, yeah.
You had a forum, one, two, three?
I thought it was a forum, but, yes, uh.
And oh, by the way, I didn't have to abstain, according to the lawyer, I could vote for myself, but I didn't.
Okay.
That's right out of Matt Cross's mouth.
Okay. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to ask about the last meeting I brought up, the, the two, which, the two issues that we had, the accounts not balancing, and also, the other one was the approval payment of bills. Have we got something in place to stop bills being paid? We have something in place to stop bills being paid without approval, and when are we going to have the accounts balanced? Because they've not been balanced since December.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I know it was a question, but it was a comment.
Well, it's a kind of a question that I think somebody should answer at the next meeting.
Okay. Yes, sir?
For those who don't know, my name's Patrick McGinnis. I was given, because we did not receive in the mail, a copy of Mr. Kramer's latest newsletter that went out. And outside of using the phrase or the term "I" nineteen times, the one time I noticed he didn't use it was in reference to repaving or redoing Club Road. As members here know, Club Road has been voted down at least three times, if I'm correct, for the people living there paying for it. And Bob took it upon himself to push through one hundred and ninety-some-odd thousand dollars to do his friends a favor of repaving Club Road. This is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, in one form or another, that he did to keep friends happy. The other thing I have an issue with is, yesterday, Mr. Kramer made a reference that my wife, Jane, was breaking township ordinances or stuff. When she asked, what ordinance did she violate? Mr. Kramer said, the attorney will be talking to you. Just before this meeting, we got a response from the attorney that said, Jane did nothing wrong, that's from the mouth of your attorney, Bob. And finally closing, I think, Bob Kramer is the worst example of a person you could pick. This is a personal opinion, Bob, you have lied over and over, and you know you have lied over and over. You are the worst possible person to be a supervisor. No, he responded once again, because he does not know how to keep his mouth shut, because he's a confused person. No, Bob is the worst possible person as a supervisor, and he has, how much did that opinion from the attorney saying Jane did nothing wrong cost the township, for instance? What about the times the attorney has sat here for no per, good purpose and has cost the township money because of you?
That's enough, Pat.
No, it's not enough, I still got a couple minutes to go. Bob is the worst possible person, John, you want me to start in on you? We've got pictures in case of you from way back, and Jay saying thing with you.
Pat, please, Jesus Christ.
No, say what you want, we've got it on tape.
There's a reason nobody wants to apply for any of these jobs, you assholes.
Stop, that's right.
Let's knock it off.
That's right. And I've been, I've been exposed to it myself.
Pat, and Pat.
Why is he wanting to continue?
Why does this happen?
Please, please, we're done.
If he would learn how to keep his mouth, no.
I will make a motion that Pat be removed, because he offers, not because of what he said.
Okay, Jay, you can make the motion, but I want to advise you in advance. The Supreme Court has ruled, unless I've threatened someone, or threatened injury, you call them, because this is going to be a First Amendment violation, and then you guys better hope you have bonding, because you're going to be sued.
That's enough, thanks, sit down.
Yeah, that's Bob's standard practice, when he's losing, call the police, call the police, call the police. I asked you, you'd be doing me a big favor.
Pat.
No, I do not have to sit here, week after meeting after meeting, and listen to this man tear this township down, defame my wife, I'm not going to accept it.
The problem is, you hate me.
I hate you, and I got a nice long story, Bob Kramer, of why I think you're a corrupt individual, and I still think you're a fool.
Pat, Pat, that's enough. Pat, Pat.
Okay.
Please.
Yes.
This is enough, please stand back.
Do not touch me, do not touch me.
Back off.
Need to leave.
You need to leave.
You back off.
Back off.
You know, you're pretty brave right now, I've got you on tape calling people a coward, and when you saw, you were video, you screamed out of the room, you're the coward.
Hey Siri, call nine-one-one.
Yeah, call nine-one-one and find out what happened.
Might take care of that.
No, I want the police to come, because he is putting the town, he just called nine-one-nine, we don't have a response, no, I want this to happen.
He was asked, please, please.
I've got the Supreme Court on my side. I want the police to come, Bob, because then you will open yourself up to a compact and civil lawsuit.
What's the matter with you?
You, you are what's wrong with me.
Why are you so angry all the time?
Because you are, in my opinion, a corrupt individual. It's okay to-
Pat, that's, please. I know. That's, please. Public comment? Closed. Board comments?
Yeah, I have a board comment. Just amazes me the few people, the very few people, who engage in what I call a double standard. I follow the policy on everything I post, and I look at some of the social media policies by two members of the Planning Commission and a member of the Parks Commission who ignore that, that personally attack members of this board and don't put a disclaimer. Give their opinion, they act like they're spokesmen for the township. Everything I do, I have a disclaimer on my personal website, on my trustee website, on my newsletters. So I guess it's only good enough for me, but it's not good enough for other public officials on those commissions. It just is appalling, the double standard from a very few people that just can't stand to admit the results of the last election. So people know, people know, you, you control a Facebook page and you make negative comments, and I've got screenshots of all of them, it's just appalling. So if, if I give a, a comment on fireworks, and I get a disclaimer, attack no one, but we have public officials appointed by this board that personally attack the board and board individuals and other individuals in the community, and they get away with it, and I'm sick of it, it's a double standard that's not appropriate. Am I surprised? No, but I'm not going to allow two or three or four disgruntled people who don't want to follow the rules to derail all the progress that is made and is going to be made, especially with this upcoming budget and CIP process, thank you.
Jay?
Uh, no.
Motion to adjourn?